You guys do the recording uh on the telegram. Okay. Eh, masu. Okay, so first, eh, minasang genki deska?
Genki desu.
Genki desu.
Yokatta desu ne.
Genki desu.
Yeah, genki desu. Ii desu ne. Is there anyone who sit here? No? Everyone?
Yes, go.
No, right? Okay, everyone genki desu nee. So, what we are going to learn today? Uh, if some of you have learned hi- Hiragana and katakana, you will know how to read this. Eh, kurasu e. Kurasu e yoko so. So, welcome to my class lah. And then? Oops. Hai, kyouno jujyo, kyouno jujyo, today's lesson is going to be Japanese writing system. I'm going to talk about, uh, you know Hiragana, katakana, and Kanji, and then what you guys should learn first, textbook and apps, and then I will open a
You.
short Q and A session. If you think I'm going too fast, uh, you can ask me to slow down, okay?
Okay.
Then, okay, so first, eh, jiko shoukai, jiko shoukai. Uh, okay, chukadeh. Uh, if I say, uh, minasang dozo. Minasang dozo, dozo means please. I want you guys to repeat after me, okay?
Okay.
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 Waka ta.
Oh, wakata. Okay, nice. Eh, jiko shoukai, jiko shoukai. Hai, minna dozo.
Jiko shoukai.
Jiko shoukai?
Jiko shoukai.
Jiko shoukai.
Hai, jiko shoukai. Itta, uh, you guys don't need to be shy eh, because in language class you need to speak, to be able to speak Japanese. Because you need to speak. You don't need to be shy because. Oh, the keju. Okay. Hai, okay. Okay, iisne. Hai, watashi wa nuru desu. Watashi wa nuru desu. So, jiko shoukai is self introduction eh? Watashi wa nuru desu. Hai, minna dozo.
Watashi wa nuru desu.
Watashi wa nuru desu.
Watashi wa nuru desu.
Watashi wa nuru desu.
Watashi wa.
Watashi wa nuru desu.
Sensei?
Uh, yes?
Uh, ch- chikaku shimashta.
It's okay, it's okay. If you guys, oh, Hafiz. Hafiz, kono jujyo iranai. Okay, it's okay, it's okay. Okay, okay. Watashi wa nuru desu. Ii desu ne. Okay, next. Eh, serangguru kara kimashta. Serangguru kara kimashta. Hai, minna dozo.
Serangguru kara kimashta.
Serangguru kara kima- kimashta.
Serangguru kara kimashta.
Serangguru kara kimashta.
Serangguru kara kimashta.
Okay, nice. So, if you guys have a mic problem, it's okay to not repeat after me. Later, you guys can practice by yourself. Okay, next. Yoroshiku, yoroshiku onegaishimasu. Yoroshiku onegaishimasu.
Yoroshiku onegaishimasu. Yoroshiku onegaishimasu.
Onegaishimasu.
Okay, so this is how you do a simple, a jiko shoukai, a simple self introduction. So, you say your name. Watashi wa nuru desu. Watashi wa nuru desu. So, the one in the blue is your, you can substitute it to your name. And then serangguru kara kimashta. I come from Selangor.
Hmm.
So, serangguru. So, it becomes serangguru because why you guys think it becomes, it's spoken like that? Why Selangor becomes serangguru?
Because there's no, there's no L?
Yes. Oh, everyone tensai already. So, there is no L. So, there is no L. So, and then you also add long vowel. So, this. Eh, chukadeh. So, this. So, this, uh, long vowel, this dash is called a long vowel. So, you say serangguru. So, for example, I'm going to give another example. So, we have the words KL, Kuala Lumpur, right? So, what do you guys think it will be in Japanese?
Kuala Lumpuru.
Yes, that's right. Kuala Lumpuru. So, you guys just change, change the word, the alphabet L to R. Okay? So, serangguru kara kimashta. So, where you, uh, I come from Selangor.
Memang semua kenogoru ke kat belakang?
Ah, kenogoru, yes. Uh, usually, yes. Because, uh, yeah, be. So, because in, in Japanese, uh, usually, the vowel, the vowel, the words must always end with vowel or the consonant N. I'm going to show the example later. For example, seranggo, we become serangguru, but for con- for, you know, prefecture like Klang Pan. So, we don't add, uh, so it can become keran- kerantan. Kerantan. So, kita tak, uh, we don't change the N word at the end to be tunu, because N is acceptable in Japanese. Okay? So, you guys must remember that in Japanese, the words must always end with a vowel, except for the consonant N. So, that's why my name, my name is Nuru, right? Nurul. L, there's supposed to be an L here, but if I change it, it will become Nururu. Nururu. It's, it's weird, but some of my friends use Nururu. I don't like it, so I omit the word L. So, it become Nuru. For another example will be, uh, Sarah. Sarah, for example. So, there's the word Hish, right? So, you just, usually people will just omit the word Hish and just say Sarah. Sarah desu. Watashi wa Sarah desu. Okay? Okay, for now, okay. And then lastly, yoroshikonegaishimasu. You must probably have heard of this word. What do you guys think the meaning is? Yoroshikonegaishimasu.
Working with you. Nice to meet you.
Yes, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Uh, so, nice to meet you. So, we have around thirty-four people in here. Can you guys use this as a basic? And then, uh, jiko shoukai, self introduction. Self, uh, you know, introduce yourself. Uh, someone who has mic problem, you guys don't need to do it. You can just do it on the chat, okay? So, I'm going to mention name. Okay, can Adila, Adila, eh, jiko shoukai? Adila. Adila? Okay. If you guys have problem, just tell me eh. I will. Somebody else. Okay, I think Adila cannot. So, I? Is I in here? Or you guys malu? Should I just ask for volunteer? So, who want to volunteer?
Sensei, kalau sebut Hajimemashite pun boleh kan?
Ah, yes, of course. If you want to use Hajimemashite, uh, first, uh, use Hajimemashite first and then put watashi wa. Uh, what, your name lah, your name desu.
Uh, like Hajimemashite, watashi wa Shabika desu.
Um, like that. Yes, yes.
Yoroshikonegaishimasu.
Uh, dokokara kimashta? Where are you from?
Serangguru kara kimashta.
Okay, can you repeat again from Hajimemashite, Shabika?
Hajimemashite, watashi wa Shabika desu. Serangguru kara kimashta. Yoroshikonegaishimasu.
Ah, iisne. Yoroshikonegaishimasu. Okay, anyone else want to volunteer?
I want to try.
Sensei?
Yes, uh, oh, okay.
Yoroshikonegaishimasu. Oh, it did it dengan dozoi yoroshiku.
Uh, same thing, same thing. Same thing. Okay, can someone who, uh, say, uh, yang, yang nak self introduce tadi? Boleh?
I?
Okay, self introduce yourself. Uh, Hazwani, Dai Ni?
Yes. Uh, Hajimemashite, watashi wa Hazwani desu. Uh, dozo kara kimashta. Yoroshikonegaishimasu.
Hai, yoroshikonegaishimasu. Hazwani. Hazwani, okay, yoroshikonegaishimasu. So, anyone else want to volunteer? Maybe three more people? Okay, Alicia, Dai Ni, which one?
Uh, okay. Hajimemashite, watashi wa Alicia desu. Serangguru kara kimashta. Yoroshikonegaish- onegaishimasu.
Hai, yoroshikonegaishimasu. Okay, iisne.
Hajimemashite, watashi wa Dai Ni desu. Serangguru kara kimashta. Yoroshiku onegaishimasu.
Oh, iisne. A lot of people come from Selangor. Dai Ni.
Sensei, Nata ni?
Yes, dozo.
Uh, kal- kalau negeri sembilan macam nak cakap? Oh, dari negeri sembilan.
Uh, cakat je, negeri sembilan. Because we cannot change. Kita tak pernah tukar nama tu man kita eh, macam negeri tertiba jadi prefecture sembilan macam pelit je. Cakat je negeri sembilan. Negeri sembilan kara kimashta. Yes, Dania?
Sarawak is still same, right?
Ah, yes, Sarawak stay the same. Sarawa, Sarawak ke.
Uh, sensei, how about Sabah?
Sabah will become just Sabah, without the word Sabah. Okay.
Sensei, how about Johor Johoru?
Uh, Johor will become Johoru. Of Johoru.
How about Rabuan? Will it become Rabuan?
Yes, it will become Ra, Rabuan, Rabuan.
About Pahang?
Pahang just, uh, you guys know, right? Uh, nanti in Hiragana, you know the word N in Japan? So, for example, we have, uh, in Malaysia, we have contoh ah, Pan. We pronounce the word N like that, right? Pan. But in Japanese, uh, usually, the word N sounds like eng. So, for example, Pahang. Uh, let me write something, chukadeh. Eh, tu, how do I? Okay, let's say, you guys can see N. Okay, say Pahang. And then, it will become, in Japanese, it will become Pahang. But the pronounce, the pronunciation still say, still stay the same. Because the word, uh, N sound like the, how the Terengganu dialect is like the N will, is more like eng, Pahang. Another example will be, uh, tapi Klang Pan tak eh? Kerantan is still Kerantan, Kerantan. Contohna, you guys know Nihongo, right? Nihongo. You guys notice, noticed that my pronunciation? Nihongo. I don't say Nihongo, I say Nihongo. Uh, you guys notice? Kita tak pernah say.
Yes, eh, yeah.
Uh, so it's, uh, so it's, it's like that. Uh, the word N is actually a bit special, because for example, we have uh, Hon plus Serangkai, chukadeh. Eh, tu. So, we have here. Eh, niapa tak bingung tu ni? So, we have dear, Hong plus Bako. Hong, Hong Bako. Baki sound, it will sounds more like M, like Gambatte. So, you know how some, some people will, uh, use, will type Gambatte as M, G A M B A T T E. And some people will write Gambatte as G A N B A T T E. Because the pronunciation is closer to the word M, because it, uh, when the word N meets the word B, their favorite B, it become, uh, M, it become M. So, that's why some people actually, uh, type the word Gambatte, uh, as M. Gambatte, Gambatte kuda saik. You guys know, right? Why it means Gambatte kuda saik?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, anyone want to try? Uh, jiko shoukai. So, maybe three more people?
Yeah, I want to try, sensei.
Okay, okay, let, okay, let me see. Uh, can you, uh, can maybe Dina, Dina Mia and who else?
Me.
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 Oh, okay. Don't fight, okay. Okay lah, so five people lah, five people. Okay. Uh, can Dina go first? Oh, okay, yes. Can Dina go first? Dina? Are you, are you okay? Can you guys he- hear Dina's voice? Because I cannot.
No.
No.
I can't go.
No.
Oh, no. Okay. Uh, okay. Then someone, someone else can jiko shoukai.
I want to try.
Okay, Farah Honey. Okay, dozo.
Okay. Watashi wa Hani desu. Uh, Pulau Pinnan kara kimashta. Yoroshiku onegaishimasu.
Yoroshikonegaishimasu. Okay, nice.
I want to try.
Okay, okay, who? Who the one who said that?
I want to try.
Okay, you guys, when you said you want to try, can you mention your name? Because
Sharifa.
Because everyone, okay, uh, Sabrina? Okay, dozo.
Eh, me?
Uh, not, not you?
No.
Uh, who, who, who? I, I, I don't remember, I don't.
I'm Sharifa.
Ah, okay, okay. Dozo.
Watashi wa Sharifa desu. Sarawak kara kum kimashta. Yoroshiku onegaishimasu.
Oh, Sarawa. Oh, nice, nice, nice. Is there anyone from Sabah here?
Me, me.
Sita Fini.
Is Sita Fini and?
Yeah.
Okay, so can Sabah people go? And?
Uh, me can I try?
Okay, try. Eh, eh, da, 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 wasa penerikai. Sita Fini can go first and Zeremi can go.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Hajimemashite, watashi wa Sita Fini desu. Sabah kara kimashta. Yoroshikonegaishimasu.
Oh, yoroshikonegaishimasu. Okay, Zeremi.
Okay, watashi wa Hirmi desu. Sabah kara kimashta. Yoroshikonegaishimasu.
Eh, yoroshikonegaishimasu. Okay, iisne. Anyone else want to try? Maybe one or two more?
Me, me.
Can I, sensei?
Can I try too?
Wow, lama ya, tiba, okay. Hi, uh, okay, okay, dozo, dozo. Confused.
Can I try?
Uh, Atika? Okay.
Kanbanwa minasan, watashi wa Atika desu. Johor kara kimashta. Yoroshikonegaishimasu.
Oh, yoroshikonegaishimasu. Okay, I think, who want to try? Tadi?
Me.
Oh, Audrey. Okay, dozo.
Eh, tu, Hajimemashite minasan, watashi wa Otori desu. Rabuan kara kimashta. Yoroshiku onegaishimasu.
Oh, yoroshikonegaishimasu. Eh, Audrey, have you learned Japanese before?
Yes, last year, but I stopped because of online class.
Oh, no wonder. Your pronunciation is really good.
Thank you, sensei.
Okay, Audrey kara kimashta. Everyone else's pronunciation is good too. Okay.
Masu yoroshiku eg- onegaishimasu.
So, it's like nice to meet you. So, we usually, uh, we use it when, uh, we first introduce yourself to a new people. Yoroshikonegaishimasu. It's the same thing as yoroshiku. Same thing. Yeah, yoroshiku is more
Yoroshiku.
More casual. Yoroshikonegaishimasu is more, you know, polite and. So, maybe one more people? Just one more? Oh, da, 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 wasa penerikai. Uh, Mawa, you guys, you want to try? Jiko shoukai?
Uh, watashi wa Mawa desu.
Hmm?
Johor kara kimashta. Yoroshiku onegaishimasu.
Oh, Johor kara kimashta. Yoroshikonegaishimasu. Oh, a lot of people from Johor also, yeah? Nice, nice, interesting.
Uh, sensei?
Hmm? Okay.
Uh, can we, uh, can, uh, I use, uh, dozo yoroshiku?
Ah, yes, yes, can, can.
Oh, okay, okay.
Uh, there, there's a lot of variation. Uh, some people, some textbook will say dozo yoroshiku, some textbook will say yoroshikonegaishimasu. It is the same thing, the same thing. If you think, uh, yoroshikonegaishimasu is too long, you can just say dozo yoroshiku. It's too long, right? We're late, Dida. Okay, so everyone here is Malaysian, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so today, uh, did you guys watch Olympic?
No.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Hi, okay. What sport do you watch?
Volleyball.
Volleyball? Because they are handsome?
Right.
Okay, volleyball. Volleyball is ne. Volleyball, okay. I, I, I don't watch Olympic, but, you know, when I scroll TikTok, I will saw, I will, I will see, you know, Takahashi Ran. Takahashi Ran? Am I, am I correct?
Yeah.
Takahashi Ran. And then I will, I will see, I don't know, there's a lot of, uh, Japanese volleyball playing on my TikTok. So, it's like, oh, nice, nice, nice. You can man, you can man. You can man, you guys know what you can man means, right? Or you guys don't know?
Yes, yes.
Handsome. Handsome man. Yes, handsome man. So, let's learn, uh, apa namanya? Negara eh, negara kunie eh, kunie. So, first, here we have China. Chugoku, chugoku. Hai, minna dozo.
Chugoku.
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 How pronounce it?
Oh, how to pronounce it? Oh, you, uh, because I don't put rumaji eh.
Yeah.
So, you guys can just follow up to me. Chugoku, can someone who have learned, uh, Japanese? Hafiz, Hafiz boleh tulis rumaji dekat Zoom?
Uh, okay, okay.
Okay, thank you. So, chugoku. Okay, so next is Nihong. Nihong. Hai, minasang dozo.
Nihong.
Nihong.
Nihonggo.
So, Nihongo, uh, when we add go, it will become language, Japanese language. So, for example, chugoku, so we add go, it will become Chugoku go. Chugoku. Mandarin, Chinese, Mandarin Chinese. Okay, next we have, uh, this one is katakana. Amerika. Amerika.
Amerika.
Amerika.
So, Amerika here refer to the US eh, the US. So, next we have our country, Malaysia. Maris.
Malaysia.
Maris.
Malaysia.
So, if you, if you guys want to add, uh, which country you guys come from, uh, in the this jiko shoukai, in this self introduction, you can add Malaysiajin desu, Jin, Malaysiajin desu. So, it means.
Uh, sensei, your slide.
Oh, Malaysiajin desu, okay. Oh, lemak, this is a, a, okay. Next, we have, what flag is this, guys?
South Korea.
South Korea.
So, South Korea, South Korea. You guys love South Korea drama or K-pop?
Yeah.
A little bit.
Lot of, yes, so, uh, sensei, sensei nak tanya, siapa sini minat twice?
Sayah.
Ya, I did love.
Sayah.
Okay, same, 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 one lagi desne. Okay, Kangkoku, Kangkoku. Hai, minasang dozo.
Kangkoku.
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 Hai.
Kangkoku.
Kangkoku. So, if we say Korean language, what will we add? Add the
Kangkoku go.
Kangkoku go.
Kangkoku go.
Kangkoku go. Kangkoku go.
Kangkoku go.
So, is anyone here learn, learning Korean language?
No.
Oh, no, because we, we are in Japanese group. So, no one learns Korean here. Oh, because Sensei is learning Korean right now, but I still don't understand. Too difficult, too difficult for me. Susa, susa. So, next we have Thai. So, this is Thai's flag eh, everyone? Thai.
Thailand.
Please, the easiest. So, you know that, uh, we call Thailand as Thailand, right? But in Japanese, it's just Thai. You don't need to, I, Thailand do. Thailand do, no, no, that, no, that's what doesn't exist. Thai. Hai, minna dozo, Thai. Thai.
Thai.
Thai.
Thai.
Thai. Thai.
Thai, wow.
Thai.
Thai. Easy, right? Easy, right? Okay, so we have here. Okay, can I ask? Um, who can open mic eh? Uh, okay, okay. Uh, Nurul Iman, Nurul Iman. Is, can Nurul Iman? Okay. So, what is South Korea in Japanese?
Kangkoku?
Yes, Kangkoku. Okay, correct. Next, I will have, uh, I just believe eh, uh, tuna, tuna chail mayo. Okay, what is China in Japanese? Like, chugoku, chugoku. Okay, next we have, okay, Zara. Zara? Can Zara open mic? Okay, you know it. Okay, so I'm looking for, uh, Zahin, Zahin, Muhammad Zahin. Can you open? Okay, okay. What is the US in Japanese?
Amare, America.
Amareka, Amerika.
Amerika.
So, Amerika. Okay, nice. Okay, uh, by the way, uh, minasang wa doko kara kimashta ka? Where you guys come from?
Malaysia. Malaysiajin.
Malaysiajin.
Malaysia desu.
Malaysiajin desne. Okay, so next, we are going to learn Nihonggo no moji, Nihonggo no moji. Minasang dozo.
Nihonggo no moji. Nihonggo no moji.
Nihonggo no moji.
Nihonggo no moji.
Nihonggo no moji.
So, this is, uh, Japanese, oh, so someone asked question, what is difference of Nihong and Nippon? Uh, takde bezir. Yes, I don't think Sensei can you see the chat? Uh, yeah, I can see it, but I, I can focus on it. Okay, it's actually no difference eh, Nippon, Nihong, but I think usually people will use Nihong more lately. For example, Nihonggo, we don't say Nippongo eh. Nihonggo, don't say Nippongo. Okay, so Japanese writing system. Okay, why is this?
Hiragana.
Hiragana. Hiragana. Hiragana.
Hiragana.
Katakana or Hiragana?
Hiragana.
Hiragana.
So, Mawa said today, Hiragana, yes, Hiragana. Okay, this is Hiragana, right? And then we have here?
Katakana.
Katakana.
Katakana. So, here we have?
Kanji.
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 So, Japanese actually has another one writing system. It's, it's basically rumaji. So, rumaji is a Roman alphabet, which means ABC lah. ABC, you guys already know. We already know ABC, so no need. So, uh, I have mentioned it before. So, Japanese doesn't have, uh, original writing system. So, first, they use Kanji. So, Kanji is from where? Which country?
China.
Chugoku.
China.
In Japanese?
Chugoku.
Chugoku.
Chugoku, chugoku. So?
Eh, chugoku.
So, they take Kanji from Chugoku. So, I think, can anyone here, anyone here speak Chinese?
Yes, yes.
Who? Audrey?
Huna, huna, huna.
Okay, quite a lot of you guys speak Chinese. So, I think in Chinese it's called Hanze. I'm not sure, my pronunciation might be wrong, but I think in Chinese, Hanze, am I correct?
Oh, oh.
Hanze.
Hanze, okay, nice.
Isn't it?
Hanze. So, we have Hanze. So, when it become Japanese, it become Kanji lah, Kanji. So, uh, because they don't have their or- original system like, uh, like, uh, Korean with Hangul, so they take Kanji and adopted it, uh, their own style lah. So, and then, after that, because people say, you know, Kanji is too difficult, right? Kanji, muzukashi deska? Is it hard, everyone?
Hi, it's very hard.
Very hard.
And say, I got it.
Yeah.
Uh, so it's hard, right? So, they created Hiragana from Kanji. So, they actually created Hiragana from Kanji. So, and then, uh, katakana is also created from Kanji too. So, there are actually a list of Kanji that, uh, Hiragana and Katakana base from. I think, I will share it later. Because I don't pay, yeah, I don't think it's really important to know, but if you guys just want to add it as your knowledge, in your knowledge, nanti I will share lah. So, this is Hiragana, this is Katakana, and this is Kanji. So, what do you guys think are the difference between these three writing system? Can someone tell me how to? When, when to use Kanji? When to use Hiragana? When to use Katakana?
Hiragana or F R D in which one?
Hmm?
Symbol represent a sound.
Hmm?
Symbol represent a sound.
Okay. Okay, anyone else want to try?
I only know the Katakana. Katakana only used for the foreign lang- foreign words.
Okay, just like you guys' name lah. For example, my name tadi, remember eh, remember, right? Nuru. So, Nuru. So, this is Katakana. So Nuru, so this is katakana, and then seranggor, seranggor, so this is also katakana because it's a foreign words. Okay, how about Hiragana?
Represent a whole word idea.
Yes, okay, so Hiragana, uh usually, uh student, student. Uh primary school, they will learn, uh Ki- Hiragana first before learning Kanji. Everyone will start from Hiragana. So first, how to start? When people ask me how to start learning Japanese, I always say, learn Hiragana first. Learn Hiragana first, because it's the easiest, among these three is the easiest. So if you don't know Hiragana, uh. So if you guys don't know Hiragana, it's like learning English without learning A B C. Uh it's like that lah, it's like that. So Hiragana is really important, because we have furigana. So furigana is basically, uh the thing, the reading that we put on the top of a Kanji. So if you don't know what the Kanji reading is, we can always look at the furigana, which is basically the Hiragana. So if you guys don't know the Kanji reading, but if you know the Hirag- the fur- if you can see, if you can read the furigana, it will be. Easy for you guys to learn. So Hiragana, you must learn Hiragana first, and then next you can learn katakana. So katakana is used for foreign words, for example, uh word like your name, place, like some, uh like tadi. Amerika, Amerika, so you learn, you use katakana, and then after that, you can start learning Kanji along with grammar. Okay, Kanji, there's a lot of Kanji, okay, if you see here. Uh, okay, okay, tapet apa? Okay, can my Chinese speaker, my Chinese speaker, uh someone who can speak Chinese here?
Hi.
Uh Odori, so what is this Kanji, uh sound like in Chinese? Sui, okay, sui, okay, you, you can see sui here, right? Sui. Sui, so this is, okay, this is kunyomi and onyomi. What makes a Japanese Kanji a bit different from Chinese other readings? So when they take the Chinese Kanji, uh from the Chinese, they also take the Chinese reading. So for example, they already have the word for this means what, Odori? So water, so they already have the word water in Japanese, mizu, it's a mizu. But then, when they take the Kanji for mi- for mizu, for the water, they also take the reading to, the Chinese reading too, which is sui. So now we have two reading. Okay, panta, so kita di dua reading for Kanji, which is kunyomi and onyomi. So sui, sui is onyomi, onyomi is the Chinese reading. Basically, uh simply said, onyomi is the Chinese reading, which in this Kanji will be sui, sui. And then, mizu, mizu is kunyomi. Okay, boleh follow? Uh, repeat again?
Ah, yes.
Okay, okay. So in Japanese, they have, in Kanji, uh when we want to read a Kanji. In Japanese, they have two reading. Why? Because when they take the Kanji from the Chinese. They also take not just the Kanji, not just the character, they also take the reading too. So they took the Chinese reading, and then they add it on their already existed reading. For so, for example, in this Kanji, this means water, ai, 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 and then, so the Chinese reading is sui, sui. So they take it, so this is what called onyomi, onyomi is Chinese reading. And then they also have the original reading, uh which Japanese call mizu, mizu is water. So this mizu is kunyomi. It's okay, it's okay if you guys don't understand now, because there's a lot of sui, mizu, there's a lot, there's a lot of thing. Kanji is a bit difficult to understand, but later I think I will do a separate, uh study session just for Kanji. Okay? Okay, okay, one more thing, one more, one more Kanji. So this Kanji, okay, you guys know what this Kanji means? Anyone here know? Okay, semua tak tahu. Okay, so my Chinese speaker. Okay, so no one here knows, so actually this, this Kanji, okay, for in Japanese, it can mean. Uh two reading. Oh, some people here had to leave because internet problem. Okay, 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 okay. Okay, guys, it's okay, guys. If you guys have internet problem, it's okay. Okay, so this Kanji, if I'm not, uh if I'm not wrong, so this Kanji is also pronounced as an. In Chinese, I'm not sure whether my, you know, intonation is correct or not, but it's an. But, uh in Japanese, it, so an is also, an is onyomi or kunyomi, guys, Chinese reading. Okay, nice. So an has the meaning of peace. Ah, so kedamaian, amain, peace, an, an shin, an shin, kedamaian, and then. So an shin shite, an shin shite, oh, you guys know already, yeah, and then it also mean yasui. Yasui, have you guys heard of yasui? Oh, really? Have, oh, and no one here have go to. Oh, so yasui means cheap, yasui means cheap, murah. You guys notice lah, the word ai pronounced i, because, uh yasu. Uh the, this Kanji, only the re- the reading is yasu, so nanti dekat outside will be i. Uh muzukashi ne, it's okay, it's okay. But you guys understand kunyomi and onyomi already, right? So kunyomi is Japanese reading, and onyomi is?
Original reading.
Original? Yes. So actually, if you guys want to know, the easiest way to know which one is Chinese reading, which one is Japanese reading. Usually, the Chinese reading will be combined with another words. For example, we have here sui. Okay, Japanese doesn't, for, if they were just want to say water, they will say mizu, mizu wo nomimasu. Mizu wo nomimasu, I drink water. But if you, they want to use sui, it's usually, uh we will add another Kanji, for example lah. Uh this is just example sui, and then we will add here. Suido, so sui do, so this is like. So sui do is, ah, the best by you guys. Suido is ai, you guys know ai, ai, ai. Uh, not water, it not just. If someone help me. To look at it, and traditionally, I do, I don't know, I don't remember the English. I don't remember the English meaning. Suido, sui do, sui do, drain, water system, cintula. Suido, okay. Okay, but you guys understand, like, two, uh onyomi and kunyomi. Okay, next, we have textbooks. Okay, so have you guys used this textbook before?
No.
Okay, everyone here, okay, can so, can you guys put the, you know, hand raised thing in Zoom, if you guys don't have textbook?
I have the Minam, Minami Nihongo.
Oh, Minami Nihongo, okay, okay, uh quite a lot eh.
I have Genki and Minami Nihongo.
Wow, rich. Okay, oh, Minami Nihongo only, okay, nice, nice, okay. So this is Minami Nihongo eh, uh there's actually quite a lot of, uh cover, depends on division, uh divi- divisional. You guys can get Minami Nihongo from Shopee, or what do you call? Uh Kino Kuniya, Kino Kuniya. So actually, Genki, I have it in my Google Drive, if you guys already check. Uh my blog lah, I, I actually put in. So actually, Genki ada dalam Google Drive, Sensei, if you guys don't want to buy any textbooks. So this one, Iro Dori, I actually really recommend Iro Dori because it's free. Because it's free, so I recommend Iro Dori, so let me show you guys the, let's say. The website eh, you guys can see my screen now, right? So this Iro Dori website, can, I'm going to change it to English. Okay, so this one is for starter, so like you guys, eh you guys, if you guys haven't learned Hiragana, right, you can use this. So, uh Iro Dori ni, you guys can download all, or you can download it by chapter. So they also have this MP three, the, apa? That you guys can listen, listen and practice. What I like about Iro Dori, it's learning by the free, so look, uh, they have, they put furi- furigana. Kyoushitsu no Nihongo, and then they also put, uh, English translation. I'm going to take attendance. Uh wait, I, I'm going to put the link in the chat. Okay, ah yes, yes, I can share the link, okay, of course. Okay, I already put the link on the chat, and I think you guys can download ke, apa ke tengah tengah. So they actually have another, after you guys have finished starter book, you guys can go to Elementary One, Elementary Two. So only, for now, only up to Elementary Two, but I think it's enough. So and then they also, these, uh also have, you know, these grammar notes, tip for left in Japan, Kanji words. Hiragana, katakana, so you guys can learn this ai, you know, kakiku, keiko. Uh so they also learn how to input Japanese character, like she, ci, zi, zi, so you guys can see right here. That Japanese doesn't hurt, the word zi will become ji. So example, your name is Hazik, it will become Hajiku. Hajiku, or you, your name is Nazia, it will become Najia. Okay, ne onesa, otosa, this one is easy, 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 okay. They also have Kanji eh, Kanji. Kanji, Kanji, yeah, cool. So you guys can then, but for Kanji, I actually recommend another book, because this one doesn't teach how to, you know, the stroke order? The stroke order, they don't teach it. So for Kanji, I will recommend, but this one is not free, yeah. I will recommend for you guys, I do for you guys to get an app, for example, like Takaboto, if you have Android. You can use Takaboto. Takoto, and then you find, for example. We learn mizu, right, tadi, what is mizu, guys? Do you guys still remember? Yes, water. So you, you can play. So you can hear the pronunciation, so and then here, so you guys can see, right? So Takaboto is actually free eh, on Android, that's why I like the, the web, the website. So actually here, you can see the stroke order, with example, this one, two, you guys, you guys can follow this. And then the stroke order, and then what I like about Takaboto, because they also have example. Well, something, next, next we can learn about it. Okay, this one, I will also put it on the chat. Okay, or, actually, there's a lot of app that you guys can use. But for me, be- if I want to check the stroke order. I will use this website, but this, for this website, you need to know Kanji already. So you guys can see the animation, right? So one, two, three. So there's a lot of, so here you can see, based on phone, the, the reading, the reading, the. Kanji will look slightly different. So here we have, uh so for, for this one, we look like this, uh. Then we have a lot of, eh, correct, uh, nanti, nanti lah, dulu. Okay, so, okay, so tadi I, I nak katanya, nak recommend, so this one is for free option eh. If you guys don't want to spend money to buy Kanji textbook, you can use an, an app, and then search for the stroke order. And then you can, guys, you know, mathematics books that we use during scola rendah, yang kotak dia besar. Yes, I use it for learning Kanji before. For example, they would mizu, I would mizu, one row, and then next I will learn another Kanji. Okay, uh Ishaa Fira, you have question, or itu tadi punya tangan tak turun lagi? Oh, tak turun lagi. So this one is for the free option lah, but. So kalau tak free, I like Kayo Sensei, if you have heard of Kayo Sensei. Uh she's quite active on Twitter, so she's a calli- calligrapher. So she teach people on how to write Hiragana, katakana, and Kanji prettily. Okay, so this one is actually quite pricey lah, semuanya, so this one. Uh Hiragana, katakana, Kanji, volume one and volume two, forty four, forty four dollars, forty four dollars, how much, ah? In ringgit?
Dua ratus.
Dua ratus, hmm, expensive lah. One hundred and eighty five point ninety ringgit, like. So yeah, I recommend this book, uh why? I, I tak bingi po eh, tapi, I like the way, uh Kayo Sensei teach on Twitter. Why I like it, uh for example, Kanji, if you guys think it's too expensive, maybe can buy, uh volume one first. So what I like about this is because. So you guys can see eh, so dia ada letak, uh the mini, and then, uh stroke order. And then, uh, apa namanya? Uh example sentences. And then the mini, the symbol, so I like the way, you guys can follow Kayo Sensei on Twitter, Kayo Sensei. The name Kayo N Sensei. Okay, so that's for Kanji. For textbook, I actually recommend, I really recommend Iro Dori because it's free. Yeah, because it's free, so you guys, actually, this book also have other. Uh editions in other languages, simplified Chinese, traditional Chinese, uh kemer, I think this one is Myanmar. I think Myanmar, Myanmar, near Basque, Indonesian, Mongolian, for now only this lah. Um Mia, you, you raise your hand. Is that, you have any question, Mia? No?
No.
Oh, no, okay, okay, okay. Okay, so next is actually last, yeah? So actually, this is the last quote, uh the best textbook or apps are the one you use. So actually, it doesn't matter, you buy a lot of textbooks or a lot of apps, you guys download a lot of apps, it doesn't matter, because. Actually, the best one are the one you use lah, so chutomate, actually, I want to share apps that I would like to recommend. You guys know what chutomate means, right? Can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, as you can see, I'm learning Korean and Chinese, but that doesn't matter. So what I will recommend, if you have iOS, I will recommend this Imiwa. So what I will recommend, if you have I O S, I will recommend this Imiwa. So Imiwa, for example, uh, I'm looking for Hone. So, can see the order, the stroke order here. And then you can also read the on reading, the Chinese reading, and then kun reading, the, what is it? Kun reading, guys, you guys still remember? Kun reading, kunyomi, yomi is actually reading eh?
Japanese reading.
So and then in Pingying, yeah, Pingying, this one is Chinese lah, and then Korean, and then they also have meaning here. So interesting to think, so that's why I will recommend this app, Imiwa. Next, oh, next. So this one, actually, when you have, uh, advanced kit, if you guys have learned Kanji. So this one is called Kanji, Kanji Kenpe. Kanji Kenpe apps, so it's for those who already know, uh, Kanji eh? So example, i, or sim, sing it. Oh, betul eh, uh, so this is already, this is actually for more advanced level, so then, me, I don't recommend for now. Later you guys can learn lah, if you already, you know, learn Kanji. So that's my app. And then, ah, this one, I really like this one. Uh, Hiragana, Hiragana, you guys can see it, Hiragana. So Hiragana for, if you want to learn Hiragana. And then Bumpo, so Bumpo is actually called grammar. Uh, what I like about this Bumpo app, you guys can see right my screen? Ai, okay, so they, they have course, for example, start from basic, alphabet and basic word. And then you can start learning from Hiragana and all. And then they also have G L P T, okay, so G L P T is actually a Japanese language proficiency test. So, uh, from the beginner, elementary and five until N one, proficient. So if you guys want to, uh, take a G L P T exam, you guys can start from G L P T N five, after you have learned Hiragana and Katakana lah. So, we will try, so example, okay, wa desu, okay. So, you know, they have English, so very easy to understand. You can add the word desu to any noun to mean I am or it, it is, noun plus desu, okay. Oh, because I don't share the sound lah, masa sharing skin tab lah. And this, so they also have audio, so that's why I like the, uh, this app, Bumpo app. So this Bumpo app actually, uh, is free, but, uh, they have premium. So they have premium me, but you can create free account, I think, so it's not a problem. But I like this app a lot. So this one is also recommended for you guys. Next, I, to be honest, I don't think you guys need a lot of apps, but for now, ah, Hinative. So Hinative actually, if you want to ask, uh, Japanese questions, you can ask it here. And then they will answer your question lah. It's like, uh, Hello Talk, same thing as Hello Talk. Hello Talk, I Talky, tandem, this is for if you guys want to find friend, find Japanese, find language exchange friend to speak. Or, uh, another one I actually recommend, uh, mana this code? So because they usually have this chat, voice chat, so Begine Japan, and then they will talk in Japanese. Everyone can talk here, in Japanese lah. Uh, so intermediate, you can, you can also create your own room. Uh, Kaiwan Nihongo, ah, yous? If you guys know how to use this code lah.